We're good.
Okay, I would like to welcome everyone back to the School Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. If you could please all rise for the National Science I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. If anyone is making a recording, I see you go, thank you. And Ryan, thank you. Excellent. So, we're opening the public meeting again. It looks like we have a new student advisory. Young lady, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Molly Keane.
Molly, welcome.
Thanks, Mom.
Would you like to give us an update on the comings and goings?
Sure. Hi, I'm Molly Keane from Bremond High School, and here are some current updates. On April 24th, National Science Honor Society induction ceremony will take place. Art also recently had their induction ceremony. On April 23rd, guidance is having an important AP meeting for all students who are taking AP exams in May. AP classes are also getting ready for those exams. On April 25th, quilts and quotes poetry celebration will be at High Field Hall. And on April 27th, the evening of Jazz Event will be taking place. The upcoming FHS D reduction on Greece is May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and tickets are on sale now, and they are $13. Junior's mea prom tickets will start going on sale April 29th with the cost being $60 per ticket. I also believe they're still looking for volunteers for the after-prom. Spring sports season is now underway. On April 11th, sailing Beat Sandwich 4-0 and continuing great start to their season with their upcoming record being three wins and one loss. On April 10th, softball had a dominating 8-0 victory on Montmore to go 3-1 on their season. April 10th, girls tennis defeated DY 5-0 for their first win of the season. Also on April 10th, boys tennis won at DY 3-2 to even their record at 2-2. April 11th, unified track opened their season with a great meet at DY. And on April 9th, boys lacrosse remained undefeated with a 13-6 win over on Nantucket.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
An amazing update. Very thorough. Does anyone have any questions for the student? No?
We're the worst.
Well, we thank you very much for joining us, and we hope to see you again.
Thank you.
We'll be more professional next time.
Thanks, everyone. We're gonna keep her.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to the presentation of Together We Can. Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, is there anyone for public comments? Sorry, I totally skipped that right over. No? Is there anyone on the... because my computer is...
Yeah, no.
All right, moving on. Together We Can.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Kelly. I'm the treasurer of Falmouth Together We Can. This is Kathleen Jespersen. She's the president. And we're here to talk a little bit about the after-prom, the celebrations after-prom. The first thing I'd like to tell people is when we first started in 1995, my son was 17 years old in junior in high school. Kathleen's daughter was 17. And our children are now 45. I have four grandchildren and she is two. So it kind of puts things in perspective for how long we've been here. So Kathleen is not only the president of Together We Can. It's been an honor to work with her. She was instrumental in bringing the concept of Together We Can here in Falmouth over 30 years ago. She incorporated it into the 501(c)(501) that it is today, and she was instrumental in the very first celebrations after-prom in 1995. So, take it away, Kathleen.
Actually, I think it was 1994.
It was 1994. We had the group meeting in 1994.
Silicosis. And so minus the two years of COVID, we've had this. And sometimes I think that the community believes that there's a machine that makes this happen. Probably because it's the same board that gathers the money and writes the grants and puts it on. But it's not a machine. It's... we need parents, and this year it's been a struggle to get parents to volunteer. I think an ounce of fear that it would not happen brought parents together, and it is happening this year. I'm not doing this next year. So we're hoping that someone, certainly Falmouth Together We Can, will be helpful. We always are. It is ours. When we started this, the school didn't want a part of it at all. It was just one more thing, which I completely understand. But the school has always been instrumental in helping us with it. God bless Dave. Well, Dave Watson's on our board, but his dad, Bob Watson, was always there with us and helping us. So, the first... is there anyone who doesn't know what it is or needs an explanation?
The public might not, so...
Yeah, you could just say what it is.
Well, it started... I'm from Washington DC, and my youngest sister had an after-prom celebration, and she told me all about it. And my youngest at the time had just been killed. She was seven. So it was a healing for me to do something in this community because many students on prom have been injured or killed. So for me, it was a healing practice. And what we decided was to have this celebration after the prom. So it starts around 11:00, 11:30, and goes till 5:00 AM. What we do is... the first year we did this was over $10,000. And that was great, except for we all know the prices have gone way up. All the food is donated from our community. All the raffles prizes, which are extraordinary, are donated from the community of Falmouth. When I started this, people wanted it to be drug and alcohol free. In my humble opinion, it's become a gift from your town, our town, to the kids. And that's the way I like to explain it, because it truly is to tell the kids that it's a gift. Your community supports this. They love you. They want you to come back and live here. And many have. They've come back and they have decided that Falmouth is the type of community in which they would like to live. So the prices have gone up. And once I calculated that, if every group of parents or parent donated... At the time, it was $10, but now we need $20 from each parent, and it would almost pay for the event. We've only had 17 parents donate. Town meeting members have donated, have been... the number has been larger than our parents. And as far as parents, we have a lot of grandparents volunteering, and we need more parents. I do understand that parents are busy and parents are working. Sidebar, remember a TV show with Oprah, and she had three parents on stage? And she asked them how much they paid to have their lawn mowed? And they all said, you know, $30, $50, $100. Then she asked them how much they spent to get their hair cut. Well, today it's about $100, unless I don't cut mine. But... and then she asked them how much you pay your babysitter. And it really hit home because they paid the babysitters about $5, not an hour, about $5. And so she said, "So let me get this. You care more about your lawn and your hair than your kids? And I think about that when this comes up, when celebrations comes up. These are our children. These are our community children, and we want them safe. So we do need parents to help us with this. Our community is unbelievably generous. We don't even have to send them letters. We do send the parents letters. Carol, our media person, she and I write small grants with our community. Woods Hole's always been generous, and there's one woman, when Woods Hole couldn't... Miss Mackey, she would always send us dollars because Woods Hole couldn't give us that here plus her heart. So I think in closing, we would like... we do need teachers. The teachers from the high school have been fabulous because they know the kids coming in. And this is not just Falmouth High School students. We invite the students from Falmouth to go to Upper Cave in Sturgis and invite them. Right into a woman at the French Bakery. She says, "My girls go to Sturgis." Please tell them I personally invite them to come. She does have friends in Falmouth, so I'm hoping that she does. All I ask is that parents give me a call and say, "My son or daughter is from Sturgis or from Upper Cave, and his or her name is Boydexter. Would you please just put their name..."
They have to register.
Yeah, just so we know. And then we call. Each of the students lines up at the door when they're ready to go home, and we call their parents and say, "Do you know that Susie Kew is living with Boydexter?" And mom or dad says, "Absolutely. I know. I have no idea." They have to stay until mom or dad says that they can go. And we do have a police officer who's there. He's nabbed a few six-packs of beer from older siblings that pick up younger sibling and drive home. But we ended up with the beer. Well, not us. Somebody ended up. Are there any questions?
Yes.
As a parent who got your letter, when I made my donation, I had no idea what the budget was. And maybe understanding what the size of the budget is and even a figure like if every family paid or donated X amount, it would help and what that budget is for, just to kind of help motivate.
Good suggestion. I hesitated to say how much. And the primary reason for that is that people say, "For one night? Really? You're spending that much?" But amazing things happen. Kids are at this with classmates that they haven't even run into before at the high school, and they become longtime friends. It's also kids who don't go to prom, can't afford to go to the prom, and they come and have a grand time, and it's a huge party for them. That's what we do out there.
Like I said, just even the... because I know a lot of our PTOs do this as well, right? If every one of our families donated $10 or $100, whatever, that would help us reach our goal. And I know there are plenty in the community who also look at that and say, "That's great. I'm gonna do two or three times that to make sure that the families who can't afford are covered." And so just giving people that benchmark.
I think it's a grand idea. One woman wrote, she goes, "I can't do anything, but I can donate." And I'm of the philosophy, "I couldn't donate, so I was volunteer," and that's precious. That's your gift. When we did first start this, we met with, I think, five women, and one of them said, "You serious about this? Each of you write a check for $100." So I went home and I said, "Gee, I wrote a check for $100, and we don't have it." And at the time, when you had three days to find the $100. So that's how it all started, the $500.
So when I met with Lori, I did say to her, you know, fundraising for us, we usually can raise $10,000, no problem, because we do write grants and we have Road Race that helps us and people that do donate, but it's getting beyond that. The big toys in the gym alone, the challenge events, those are the costly ones. We have like $1,500 apiece, you know, and then you want the character out. And we believe in entertainment and food. You feed them and you entertain them all night long, and they're happy, and they're with their friends. So as we move forward and we're looking to pass the baton, there has to be another generation that picks this up. I volunteered at the schools for 22 years. Kathleen was a teacher, so we knew a lot of people. And I could gather my friends, but you know, we're getting up there now. And we don't know as many as we're. So we really need the help of teachers and parents of today's children.
So if I can just say, from the superintendent perspective, I was amazed about the after-prom when I got here. I just absolutely could not believe. It was just another unique thing about Falmouth that we offered our students. As a superintendent, knowing that our students are somewhere and safe after-prom, I think that's... For a high school principal, a superintendent is a night that we don't sleep. And just knowing that there's a place for them to be safe, I certainly hope someone picks up the baton. And I just encourage anyone, if you haven't seen it, it's absolutely amazing. You know, what the kids... what you create is just magical. And so I just encourage anyone to volunteer or donate or, you know, just keep this going for the kids. It's for the kids.
We did have someone. A student of mine, she said, "Can she come right in?" So that happens. So she said, "I can't be there." Kathleen's back at it.
If I can just say one thing, I came from the years... I graduated Falmouth High School in 1991, and I come from the years where we didn't have Together We Can and didn't have an after-prom party. And I will spare you all the things that were done after the prom. As now a parent of an upcoming prom goer, I can tell you how secure and safe I feel knowing that not only is this an offer and an opportunity, but that kids want to go. They look forward to this. They're excited about this. They're excited about seeing their friends, about seeing other kids from other, you know, that didn't go to the prom. They're excited about the games. They're excited about the raffles, you know.
And they're in awe when they walk in.
They really are. And I know this from my niece and nephew, who, you know, have been to the prom in years past, and how the culture, thanks to you fine ladies, have turned on how the culture was when I was going to the prom here in Falmouth. So I thank you. Thank you for starting this. Thank you for continuing this. Thank you for putting the bug in the community's ear that you need some help and that you're stepping down. And Heather, great suggestion on putting the unit of measure of, you know, if this... if we're looking for, you know, $20 a person, I can tell you, you know, you'll have the community members like Heather that will say, "Well, I'm gonna write... If the dollar sign is 20, I'm gonna write a check for X because I'm gonna try to help another family that wants to help that can't help." So, and that's another great thing about our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Teri.
I always think that a picture is worth a thousand words. If you have any pictures of the things like the human Velcros.
All parents got 700 victims.
They did.
Kelly.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the pictures are amazing, but until you have... Unless you have volunteered and you have seen it, it is just... it is completely mind-blowing
Yes, what's...
to step into the building that you know as Gus Campbell and see what has happened to it. It's unrecognizable.
I think that's what the kids are in awe of. It's... they go there to play soccer, and then they walk in.
And they walk in, and there's like...
Totally decorated.
the set from Friends. I mean, it's crazy.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it would be possible to welcome parents of our students to come and stick their head in.
Oh, we do. We open the doors.
I never knew that until I volunteered.
It's open all day Saturday, and when Helen Kennedy was the rec director, she would have a program going on, and she would tell them all to walk the kids through. And the parents would come in from the younger generation so that they could see what...
Yeah.
If they still wanted it to go, they could help out and keep it there, you know.
Because I think, you know, parents of a 10th grader who get to see how magnificent it is when they get the letter the next year, it really means something because they saw it with their own eyes.
Yeah.
And it's not something that I knew you could visit until I was there.
You could all come on Saturday. It's all decorated. Usually, they decorate all day Friday to Friday, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So it's almost the final touches of Saturday morning.
Thursday.
Yeah.
And who starts? Call it sneak peek.
Who helps with the decorating?
Any volunteers we can get.
So it's really fun. We really should do it. It's really, really fun.
We do have... that was what... we wouldn't let them leave until you pick a room. So we have people who volunteer to do each of the rooms. They collect their volunteers to help them decorate, and it's all on them. We don't...
And we had a parent still up to help with the chaperones this year. And, you know, whenever we go and talk to the students, I love it when I hear them say, "I don't want you there." "I don't want you there." And we tell the kids, "They have to be there. You don't take a stranger off the street to come and chaperone with you. It has to be your parents." So I said, "If you want this event, you need to let your parents come and help." So that's my advice to them.
It did take 10 years to change the norm. I'll be honest about that. That was tough. And I have to say, after COVID, it was like starting all over again. Because the kids, two grades hadn't seen it, and two grades hadn't participated. And we went through very similar... what we went... we went into the cafeteria the first year and talked to the kid. I'm not going to laugh, but we even went to the senior president. I'm not doing it. So it was difficult after.
That's what I mean about that, how you like... I applaud you for changing the culture because I remember when it came out, and even, you know, as a college kid, I was like, "Seriously?" And then as the years went on, it was like just the tide turned, and it... amazing.
And it was trying to get parents not to have a party on that night.
Right.
Because the kids wanted to be with their friends, and they wanted to go to the party. They want to come to the after-prom.
Right.
So that took years. Who was the principal in high school that made it mandatory that parents came to that association?
Oh, it's a chair.
Joker.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He wanted to hold a night and invited the parents, and I think only two showed up. He made it mandatory from that year on.
It's still mandatory.
Yeah.
You can't do it.
Which was the chance to be able to tell parents, "Please don't have a party."
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's great.
That helped us.
Well, and your post... I mean, small sample size, but your post-COVID efforts, I think, are working because I've got a student who's pretty good, though I'm not gonna do that, including homecoming and everything else, and wasn't sure he was gonna go to prom, but he's been talking about after-prom for months. So...
So all juniors...
He is now going to prom as well, but...
So all Falmouth juniors and seniors are invited. And even if they go to other schools, as long as they let Kathleen know that they're coming, we have a phone number. So it makes it nice because my son went to the prom junior year, but he had so much fun at the after-prom. He came to the after-prom in his senior year, but, you know, just the fun... So it did like it. But then again, that was a long time ago. Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We hope to pass that baton on. We'll be here to help.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation of Special Education Parent Advisory Council by Dr. Woodward. Thank you. Thank you.
I know Teri Altschuter, who was our CPAC chair, was hoping to be here, but something came up. So I'm going to do my best to present on both of our behalf. So this year, after the work that CPAC has done, we've been able to offer some workshops. We started in October with a presentation of Understanding the IEP Basic Rights, and that was from the Federation of Children, Federation for Children with Special Needs. Then we also were able to offer another Understanding of Basic Rights, and that was co-hosted. So in December, we were able to offer that again, and that's really one of the... Kind of, it's... one, it's a requirement, but it's two, we try and make sure that we partner with many different CPACs and invite members from other communities to make sure that if people aren't available, like our families aren't available when we're offering it, that we have multiple iterations for families to be able to participate. We had a wonderful presentation in January of the showing of the film Resilience, and it was the biology of stress and the science of hope. And it really spoke about... the presenters did a phenomenal job about speaking about resiliency and all of the ACE indicators and the impact that has on all children, but also on students with special needs. And then in February, the Neuropsychology and Education Service for Children and Adolescents, which is out of Massachusetts, Vermont, and New Hampshire, but in Karen, Massachusetts, they're out of Newton, Pangloss, and Plainville, presented an anxiety workshop, and it was anxiety in relation to learning and developmental disabilities and how to access... how to provide access to supports through the IEP. And that was, again, another wonderful presentation. And Teri also had an opportunity to prevent to... at the Federation for Children with Special Needs at their conference, and she presented on both the relationship that Falmouth Public has... Falmouth Public Schools has with the Clayne Hospital, the work that we're doing there, as well as the ongoing work with Dr. Sayana Mowusi, what we're doing with special education inclusion and just, you know, kind of trauma-responsive classrooms and racial trauma. And I have to report that other districts want to mirror the work that we've done here in Falmouth, and it was the highest attended number of participants at that session, and they requested her too. So that was wonderful that Teri was able to be able to present at that conference. And then I know Teri's the doctor, so the doctor, Teri participated in the parent advisory work that you were doing with the new grading system, and believes that it's really going to support the... how we look at performance-based grading in special education with accommodations and modifications. So she's encouraged all that and will continue to work with Dr. Teller as they move forward and monitoring that. And then also, Teri and I, Teri is the CPAC chair, and we have met periodically throughout the year to discuss program and planning and visioning. She's going to continue her role as the CPAC chair next year to work with administration to continue the work that she does to add input for the advisory council to view as the school committee members and school committee members. And one of the other kind of piece that we're working to continue is to work to increase our family engagement, in which we include also our newcomers and making sure that we are supporting all of our families, both with their cultural and language needs.
If you have any questions or provide any additional information, if I can. Any questions, comments? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Thank you so much. Very helpful. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Moving on to an update on budget. What's up?
What's up?
So we, we, we're going to go into a little bit more detail on the food service this month. And so I wanted to just give you a quick update. So this is sort of the monthly breakdown of revenue and expenses for the food service group. And I'll just probably go over the categories here. So the sales are essentially anything from, you know, soon getting a second lunch, snack sales for seltzer, water, potato chips, ice cream, et cetera. Adult sales of, when a staff member buys a lunch. And also, if you look at, for example, September and just, and January, you kind of see a spike in the sales numbers. That's brought up parents loading up their school bucks accounts for students. There was a little anomaly in the numbers for those two months. And then in addition to that is the reimbursement that we receive from the state, which is around $0.05 a meal. You know, just to give you an idea, we, we serve about 25,000 meals in a given month for lunch. Roughly around a good $6,000 for breakfast. But then there's the federal component, which is just over $4. We're personally about $4.38. And then the, the third category is the state essentially making up the difference between what's subsidized by a full subsidy with the federal government and, and those lunches that do not qualify under those, under the federal subsidy. So for students who get the full subsidy, the federal government would give around $4.38. For students who don't qualify, the state's coming in, essentially topping off that amount so that everybody gets a, a free lunch. So it's, it's, it's a distinct difference between that.
How many did you say? How many lunches?
There's about 25,000. It'll be 25,000 to 30,000 a month.
Thank you.
Across all the schools for lunch. And breakfast around $6,000. So, so that's where, you know, the total revenue is, you see, its average is about 144,000 a month. Then from that, obviously, is payroll of the food service group, the food costs themselves. You know, but if you look at the food costs, it averages around 41,000, 42,000. You, you know, you may pick up a big drop in January and that's because of the USDA deliveries were made in December. And some of the free supplies are used up in January. So the cost dropped down in, in January. And then you have the, essentially, the net income from the, from the food service overall. And that typically has been getting down to about 29,000 on average a month. So if you look at April, May, and June, I've sort of straightlined that $29,000 in net income. And then one of the, you know, the, the, we've been talking about, you know, salary increases, staff additions, or the new Master Chef, and additional help for the schools. So with all of that, we projected in at that roughly 29,000 a month in total cost. And, you know, carried that out. So you're projecting net income. And if you look at the far right, if we had all those expenses built into this year's, would be around just a slight break even, down $7,000 roughly. And then from that, we also spend, you know, so far through March, about 139,000 in capital expenditures. And that is the dishwashers we've added diversely every, every school. The, you know, the one school that doesn't have a new dishwasher is Lawrence. Here's what we built. We've been adding refrigerators and freezers to all the schools. And then probably the summer, there's, every, every school that has working ovens, but we're going to be replacing a couple ovens, ovens in the, the one that was on in, went into high school, as well as a burner in it at the, at Lawrence. So, so that, our food service balance in our account right now is a million dollars. And, you know, if you think about, you know, as we complete all the re-equipping of this, of these schools, and including buying new tables at the high school, we're just finishing off the new purchase of tables for North Falmouth. You know, the, the max amount of additional expenditures, and I'm using a, a number that's on the high end, would be around 200,000. That includes renovations of, you know, planned renovations of tea ticket for the floor tiles and the ceiling tile, new line at, food line at North Falmouth. Some tables for the high school and so on. So you're looking at maximum, you know, round numbers of about 200,000. That would be additional capital expenditures. So I think, you know, given what we've been adding in additional resources to help the staff that's doing a fantastic job. If you can imagine, you know, the schools are serving anywhere from 200 to 400 lunches with two to four people at these schools that really do a terrific job. And, and with the, you know, the new addition of a Master Chef to help with all the menu creation and, you know, for the table menus that, you know, were a pretty good financial shift for this going forward. So this, again, is not meant to be a money maker. It's meant to break even with all these costs we've talked about. We're going to be at that break even point. All right. Terry.
Could you just tell the formula again about the state contribution and the federal contribution? So a free reduced kid gets $4.38, or what did you say, right? And the other ones get what from the state and what from federal?
So if, it, essentially, it's broken down into several pieces, but using rounded numbers to make it easy. So all the total, the federal for full free lunch under the old program, the before 38. And then there's a reduced component of that for those who don't qualify for reduced lunch price. And then there's another amount for children that are not qualifying for either one of those programs. So the federal program, what happens is, you know, you, you, you take out what the federal government will give you for your free or reduced lunches. And then the state comes back and essentially tops up for, to make everybody into the.
The non-free reduced lunch kids, the state tops up.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. So they, the state really isn't paying for every kid to have free reduced lunch. It's only paying for every kid who's not free or reduced.
They're making up the difference between, so you, you literally, if you start off with 25,000 free lunches, you know, roughly, let's say, 11,000 of those are subsidized by the federal government to be a free lunch. The state comes in, it tops you off between the two and, and subsidize.
Heather. Another question along those lines, and then a couple of questions about the, the numbers here. So these are all reimbursements for lunches or for meals actually served? Not money sent to us by the government based on total enrollment or?
No, the formula actually works based on the volume of your meals that you're serving and the students who, who fit the needs of the qualification of free lunch or reduced. So it's, you report into the state every month on the volume, and then you get a reimbursement in the following month.
So if our lunches were even more desirable, we would actually have a higher rate?
That's right. And that, and that's really.
Yeah, the more they eat, the more kids eat lunch, the better the whole system works.
That's right. That's right.
When you said this, the total projected increases in new employees expenses, does that include the Master Chef position?
That does. It does. So it includes the expected negotiations for staff, existing staff, that increment. The, the new Master Chef position and additional staff that we are projecting for each school for this coming year.
So then I guess my big picture question is if we add all of that in and we are still essentially at a break even point, how, how are we actually whittling away at that, that balance that's there in the, the food service account?
Well, you'll have about 200,000, I mentioned, above in capital expenses, max, that will bring it down. But then, you know, as we develop the new menu program, you're going to have higher food costs, especially as we go to a, you know, a higher quality menu. So there's going to be several components that will. But I think to be comfortable here, you would want to keep it where we are as we start this off. Because we're making significant additions to staff and so on. We haven't yet seen the increase in food costs going into the next year. So if you look at this next, you know, a year from now, you know, we could, we could see where we are and see how successful the program and see what it does to the volume of lunches and so on. We can continue to reset. Now, this is also dependent, you know, that the state continues its subsidies. So we don't want to draw it down too quickly. We want to, you know, be aware that that could, the time go away.
I just want to say thank you because I just learned a lot about something that I can't believe I didn't know anything about. So thank you for this. I really appreciate it.
I'm excited to see this after we've had the Master Chef and all of the new pieces that we've been talking about in place.
Yeah, we'd like to do this again.
Yeah, this is so helpful. Thank you. Any other? None. All right. Thank you so much, Paul, as usual. Thank you. Moving on to superintendent update, Dr. Derrin right here.
I have several things on the red list, and we have a young student here that actually just was able to share.
Tell your fellow students.
I am happy with that, and I don't have to say it next to me. So thank you, Molly. But I do want to give an update on the, we had our fourth and final grading advisory meeting last night. And Sonya, do you want to give an update on that?
Sure, thank you. And Terry joined us, and Joan gave a little preview too. We're all together. It was a really great session because we really got a chance to dig in and workshop three different communications. So we have a, a single sheet info, info sheet that we workshopped.
Made by the Queen Flyers.
Sweet. Thank you. And I told Terry, it's like my third. Give you a little art. So we were able to workshop that. Then we dug in a little bit of web content, so we're getting ready to release our first webpage with some of the information. And then we took a ti, a little bit of time, we finally whittled our FAQs down. So we workshopped about five pages of them to really hone in on the top two to three pages. You know, really go in and then we clarified areas where we want to clarify language and areas where we feel like, hey, we don't really need this much detail right now. So it was a really great conversation. And when we wrapped up, we asked for a note taker in each of the table groups to take notes, but we also welcomed everyone's notes. So we're in the process of reading through all of the notes, which is really great. But a couple of things that stood out from some of the table conversations last night and starting to go through the feedback is really there was a question about whether or not at this stage we want to go forward with the info sessions which we had initially planned. Because we're really not looking at a, a full scale implementation in the fall, and we're really looking at strengthening some of our work throughout professional development teachers. So we talked about getting all our communications together, getting the site live, putting communications out to families. And then one of the things we talked about was just having like an extended one afternoon where anybody that wants to come in and talk about that, ask questions, could, rather than replicating the session of before. So that was sort of where we ended, but we had a, we had a really impactful and thoughtful magnets lesson in July. So any sound posted, I said, we run it out to Torvald and Linder's schools too. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. All right.
All right. And then one exciting thing, and we'll, to continue the composting because that seems to be our fun topic of the year. WCI, sorry, WCI Woods Hole interviewed Carmella and I around composting, and, and that was a lot of fun. And I believe that aired last week sometime. But anyway, so if anyone caught the early warning, interview, it was fun to keep getting the word out about what we're doing in Falmouth Public Schools. It's exciting, so.
That's great.
Yeah, excellent.
That's your last thing?
I'm gonna, each time I'm going to give Molly my message. She's gonna, she's gonna care.
All right. Well, that's great. Any questions for superintendent? No? All right, great. Moving on to routine business, where I can't, we're cruising right along here. That's why I'm just baffled. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 9, 2024? They're in your packet. Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion?
I believe Mr. Feeny's name is misspelled in the second paragraph. Mr. Feeny instead of Mr. Feeny.
Don't tell him.
Okay, we will make that edit. This is mine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other edits? No? Okay. Roll call to approve the minutes of April 9, 2024. We'll start with Mike.
Hailing, yes.
Lumpen, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terry Manera, yes.
Augusta, yes. Let's, yes.
Suzy.
Let's, John, yes.
Melissa Kip, yes. Now, congratulations. Thank you all for that. Next up, we have committee reports. Does anyone? Oh, Terry.
I always do, yeah.
Yes, you do.
Okay. So one thing that's happening, I'm going to report about the collective. One thing that's happening there that is the most favorite thing for me is their tightening up for the summer program at Mass Maritime. I don't know if you know about this program. It's where kids go overnight for two weeks and live on the campus and build boats and learn to play the violin and do all kinds. And they just love it. I don't know right now how many Falmouth kids, Falmouth historically is high in, in the list of participants. And if there's extra ones, Falmouth has over the years been able to fill those. And if there's extra ones, Falmouth has over the years been able to fill those. But, so, because they've sent out 200 acceptance letters now. The price had to go up, of course, but they're looking for a grant from DESI to help that. So I'll report on that again, because it's just so thrilling. Anyway, okay, so that was my report from the collective.
Okay, Kelly?
I have two things.
Great.
Just a reminder that your evaluation for the superintendent is due next week, April 28th. Mark your calendar. And just pointing out, in case you didn't notice or were concerned, so if you're using the Google document that I shared, everybody has their own personal link, so it is not a shared document among the committee, because that would be very violating open meeting law. So every link is individual to you. So yours is just for you, and no one else can see it, it's not a shared document. And then once you're done, let me know, and then I will be able to access it. So it automatically saves in that file, then no worries about sharing. But please, the 28th.
Did you give us another way to do it?
Yeah, so I sent.
Because Google, me and Google Docs do not get along.
I totally understand, because I feel the same way. But I know some people really prefer that. So I sent it as a Google document, as a Word document, and as a video. So take your pick, whatever works for you. Oh, and if you're doing it by pen, then I need it as a video. I need it, I need all this Sunday to type it all up.
Yeah, okay. The only reason I'm going to type it up is because that way you can share it with whoever you have to share it with.
So give me a couple extra days if you need it.
Let me grab a machine.
And of course, if you run into any trouble or headaches, just let me know. Preferably over the weekend would be great. And the second thing is that when Katie was here at our last meeting, she invited us to the Indian Education public meeting, and I had actually time to go. And it was really informative. I don't know if anyone is interested in taking a look at the slides, but she did share them after. And it goes through, you know, their obligations and how the formulas work for identifying kids to participate in a program, and that's one of the highlights of the program. It was really interesting, and I'm so appreciative that she extended that invitation to us, because I've never done that. Well, you know what you want.
Well, you know what, just send it out to all of us.
Okay, I know, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other committee member reports? I will report on policy, even that yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
After everything. We have a few things coming down the pike on our next meeting. And, yeah, we did work, we talked about a couple things, policy. Any other committee member reports?
Helen, it's for Heather.
Oh, wonderful, thank you, Mike, welcome.
Hello, sorry, I was driving home, but not really report, but I did speak with Heather and Bill about the calendar item that Heather had discussed a few weeks ago. And we have not met, but we have communicated via email, and hopefully, the three of us can meet at some point in time in the near future to discuss the holiday schedule, et cetera. And that's it.
Great. Any requests for future information? Teri?
I want to make a re-request.
Okay.
To, don't forget, this is the 15th anniversary of Falmouth High School. Maybe the paper would like to run the story. Okay, I mean, there's.
There's going to be some graduates hanging around.
Well, there was actually, and I'm not going to say the person's name in public, because they're very private, but Ray Toll. Ray Toll was there then, and she's still there now as a suburb. Yeah, I mean, for example.
We can find her at Falmouth High School.
Yeah, 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 she's been all 50 years, it's amazing. I mean, and there's, like, Bruce Grandchild was a coach, and now his kid is playing football, so there's that over the years.
Grandchild?
What is it?
Well, he, versus grandchild is now playing football, or a couple generations ago.
Oh, no, his grandson plays football.
So I'm saying his grandson, I thought you said his child, sorry.
Did I say child?
I was going to say, is that grandchild?
No, grandchild, no, anyway. I'll put my money where my mouth is and help with research, too, by the way.
No pressure, you're welcome.
As long as I can provide one.
Any other requests for information? I'm going to make a motion.
In a zone motion, yeah.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather, roll call.
Halen, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Teri, yours, yes.
And Dusty, yes. Yes. Yes.
Melissa Kees, yes, we're done. Thank you, Mike, so, thank you.